I would like to call to order the special committee, special school committee meeting on Monday, September 29th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. This meeting is being held in the library. It is being recorded for live broadcast, or not live broadcast, but for broadcast later. May I have the roll call, please? Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Mr. Purinton?
Here.
Ms. Bowery?
Here.
Ms. Power?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today to let the record show that we have Mr. Lutteiri and Ms. Petrie in attendance. This meeting has been called for an opportunity for the school board to hear from the unions about their collective proposal. This was requested that we have a single meeting, although we are bargaining in sub-units, but the request was for a single meeting to be able to present the proposal all at the same time. So with that, I would like to throw shade as delegates and visitors, and that is the teachers' unit, the nurses' unit, the ESP unit, and the secretary's unit.
All right, first of all, we really appreciate you guys coming together to do this one wage proposal, understanding that as we go forward, we will do by unit, but we really appreciate that to come all together. We really appreciate the pouring of out support from town members and from our union members. So thank you for all who are in attendance today. All our staff in our district rely on each other to do the jobs to the best of their ability. The wages that are paid for one of us impact all of us. That is why we view this as so intertwined and wanted to do this as one big wage proposal. We have an obligation to make a proposal that addresses the very real challenges being faced by our schools and by our school system, not the proposals that are easy or to expedite this process. John would like to be the opening statement. John Cross from the high school would like to raise the opening statement.
Good evening. My name is John Cross, vice president of the Winter Teachers Association. And I am here representing the collective voice of Winter's educators and school professionals, teachers, support staff, guidance counselors, nurses, and secretaries, who are steadfast in their dedication to our students and our town. For too long, these professionals have gone above and beyond for our community while watching their pay consistently trail behind neighboring districts. The familiar pattern of 2-2-2 wage increases is just not inadequate. It is generic and outdated in its approach to bargaining, and it no longer meets the needs of the district or its employees. Year after year, that formula has left us falling further behind. A similar contract would leave Winter at the bottom of the surrounding districts. We see the consequences every day. Highly skilled colleagues leaving for districts that recognize and reward their talent with competitive salaries. Many of our teachers literally drive through those higher-paying districts on their daily commute, a constant reminder that their expertise is valued more elsewhere. Our opening proposal is not aspirational. It is the product of months of careful analysis, market comparisons, and collaborative research. We have scrutinized contracts across the region, gathered hard data, and built a fair, evidence-based plan that simply moves Winter closer to the compensation levels of comparable communities. Breaking the 2-2-2 and similar contract cycle is essential. Anything less will only accelerate the loss of the very professionals who make the district strong. Tonight, you will see charts and other visuals that lay out this reality unmistakably clarity. The numbers tell a simple truth. Competitive wages are not a luxury. They are essential to returning the high-quality teacher, to retaining the high-quality teachers, support staff, counselors, nurses, and secretaries our students and families depend on every day. We are united, we are prepared, and we are resolved to ensure Winter's children are never short-changed because the people who educate, guide, and care for them cannot afford to stay. This proposal is a necessary break from an outdated routine, an investment in the stability, quality, and future of the school system, an investment this community cannot afford to delay. I would also like to add that I grew up in this town. I went to high school in this town. I learned to ride a bike in this town. I was married in this town. My kids were born in this town. They all go to the Winter School Systems. I look forward to them graduating from the Winter School Systems, and I look forward to retiring from the Winter School Systems and leading out the rest of my life here. I love this town like so many of you do as well. Thank you for your attention and giving this proposal the serious commitment that it demands.
So I am going to give you guys a written version of the proposal. It's a little worrying, right? So I ask, if you could follow along with that presentation instead of skipping ahead, I think it would be helpful if you require some explanation. I think we got enough for your folks in that, as well.
All right, we're going to start with the teachers. So in developing our wage proposal for the teachers bargaining unit, we did not want to just pick a random high general wage increase that's across the board for everybody. We don't think that's going to work. It's from kind of the get-go. We've been talking about how it's not going to work. We also didn't want to pick, you know, have the school committee then pick an arbitrary low and then just try to meet somewhere in the middle. So we did not pick one member across the board for our teacher proposal to attract new exciting teachers. We keep teachers who are in the middle in salaries scale or encourage veteran teachers to continue to work in this district. And districts which we thought were relevant, both those that are similar to us and those that are geographically nearby to us, in order to figure out what would be the most impactful wage scale for Winter. We looked at comparisons for early career teachers, mid-career teachers, and our veteran teachers, but we found a line with what we anecdotally already knew. We are underpaid. This becomes more accurate the longer a teacher remains in Winter. Key to understanding the retention issue, which we have been highlighting since our first bargaining session. So for career teachers as defined by a master's at the step one, Winter currently ranks 13 out of 18 districts that we looked at. We are a bit more than 3% below the average of these similar districts, 0.5 below the median. We want to make sure that as we continue attracting new teachers and not continue to fall behind losing talented educators to surrounding areas.
And this is generally going to be the group of districts that we looked at throughout the presentation. It's a combination of districts that are nearby, right? So places like Revere and Chelsea, but then also places that are similar to Winter in other ways, you know, mostly delineated by the members of the sports conference that you guys play in. So that's where the Swampscot and the Salem and the Banner are.
The WTA, however, does not want to make progress now, only to fall further behind during the life of the contract, which I feel like has happened over and over again. We're one to two contracts behind. The wages for teachers in the region and amongst similar districts will increase quite a bit over the next three years, as you can see from this graph. If we wanted our early career wages to be competitive at the end of the contract, we would need to have a 14 to 15% wage increase at the bottom of the scale over three years.
Okay, veteran teachers, current. The same dynamics exist for veteran teachers, except only in a more exaggerated way. Currently, the top of our masters plus 30 column is more than 7% below the average of that in comparable districts. As every district around us increases over the course of the next three years, Winter will fall further behind if we persist with the same types of wage increases the district has assisted on in recent years. Over three years, a seven-ish gap for these veteran teachers will grow to nearly 20%. And this is where we're seeing the loss of teachers, you know, coming in one, two, three years, getting their masters, and then going to those other districts. And we're losing, you know, the teachers at the beginning of the year standing up. They've been in Winter for 15, 20, 25 years. We want to get them back. So this is comparable district, their recent settlements. We are at a critical moment to address the issue. Our retention issues amongst teachers will continue to spiral. Other districts have responded to a series of market forces and have agreed to wage increases for teachers which are more substantial than those that they had historically agreed to. Amongst these same districts, the average increase for veteran teachers, this represents over the next three years. We cannot agree to the types of wage increases that we've had in the past or, as you can see, we'll just continue to fall behind. So the WTA wage proposal may seem complicated, but it really isn't. We're making a proposal which our research shows will bring Winter not to the top, but at least to the middle of our competitors. Again, I want to say that again. This is to the median of our competitors. Over three years, our proposal increases the first step of the scale by 14.86% over three years. It increases the top step of the scale by 19.23% over the three years. Increase in years one, two, and three are all equal in order to get there.
In that next, we have our scale.
Yep, so this is our example of the scale based on what Brian had just said for the first year of two for three-year contract. Again, looking at the numbers for beginning of career teachers and end of career teachers, this is the median, this is our goal, which is the median compared to other districts that are similar to us in our general area. This is year two, and then this would be the end goal of year three to get us to that median across the board. So while the WTA wage proposal will not write decades of underpayment of Winter teachers, it will at the very least help prevent us from falling even further behind. And for early career teachers for which Winter now ranks 13 out of 18 out of the districts that we compare ourselves to, our proposal would keep us from falling further down the rankings over the course of the three-year contract. If the school committee insists on the same type of wage increases that they have in the past, between 2 and 3% per year, our standing amongst other districts will decline and our retention issues will persist or worsen. And to make it even clearer, a 2-2-2% wage increase for early career teachers over three years would move the district on that experience of teachers 13 out of 18 to 17 out of 18. And for veteran teachers, it's even worse. WTA wage proposal would not quite move us to be competitive to the top of our comparable districts, but it would at least put us in the middle. And a 2-2-2% wage increase for a veteran teacher over the course of a three-year new contract would put us dead last by a pretty large margin. So one of the things that teachers in Winter have often mentioned is the number of different communities that they drive through on their commute to town. It's the reality for many of our educators, and it's a good way to look at the labor market and how it impacts what we need to do here. Jen, we have Jen here. Jen tweets to Winter from Marblehead every day and drives through or past many of the districts on the North Shore. Something that is a reality is that Jen, or any of the many teachers like her, is leaving a lot of money on the table by settling her career here in Winter, rather than any number of other districts closer to home. A typical teacher in Winter, if they had a 25-year career, could expect to earn just over 2.2 million through their time here. So if Jen stopped in Nahand, she would earn an additional $38,660 over the course of her career. If she stopped in Swampscot, she would earn an additional $50,768. If she stopped in Lynn, she would earn an additional $78,251. And if she stopped in Revere, she would earn an additional $132,315. And what may seem like small differences, a couple hundred dollars here, a percentage of two there, add up over the course of her career and impact the decisions teachers make about whether to stay or to keep somewhere else. Another example is Dave. Dave is here. So Dave commutes from Melrose every day. On his way from Melrose, Dave drives through communities to the northwest of Winter, Melrose, Malden, Everett, Chelsea, and Revere. The differences here are even more stark, and they show that we cannot afford to ignore the realities of living in the greater Boston area. So again, if Dave decided to stop in Melrose, he would earn an additional $23,406. If he stopped in Chelsea, he would earn an additional $89,334. If Dave stopped in Revere, he would earn an additional $132,000 and change. If he stopped in Everett, it would be an additional $245,000 and change. And if he stopped in Malden, he would earn an additional $366,67.
Next, we have Tara talking about our nurses' unit.
The nurse unit is very small. There are five of us. For most of us, our wages are determined by the teacher unit scale. Our proposal is to address the hardship of the few of us for whom that is not true. There are two valued nurses in the district who are on the nurse unit wage scale rather than the teacher's scale. The reason for this has nothing to do with the work that they do, their ability to do the job, or the responsibilities that they hold. The reason for this is that they hold an associate's degree rather than a bachelor's degree. Our proposal for nurses is to move these two nurses up to the first column of the teacher scale at their appropriate step. While some recognition for education is valuable, the core amounts of pay should be based on the work that you do and the value that you bring. For all other education-based pay differentials in Winter, the range is one to four percent. However, for the two nurses in question, the difference in pay for only educational credentials is a staggering 17.35% less. This difference in pay, they have endured for a very long time, all while doing the same work side by side with their colleagues. Pretending like these two nurses are paid less because they are less qualified to do their job would be an obvious fallacy. Each of these colleagues has almost 40 years of nursing experience, value experience, and expertise which far outweighs a bachelor's degree, and the experience will be lost potentially if they would decide to move on.
Next, we have Alex Brown talking about our ESP unit.
When we look at the compensation of ESPs, secretaries, and other lower-wage workers, the judgments that we make are different than when we look at teachers. The determination of pay can't be based just on comparable districts and market forces. When workers do not make enough to live with dignity, their wage increases become a moral judgment for our community. Comparing low-wage workers in Winter to low-wage workers in other communities will only serve to perpetuate a cycle of poverty for our lowest-paid school workers. We use the term "living wage" a lot, and it is a valuable concept in that it grounds us in the fact that our lowest-paid colleagues need our support in earning wages that can support a dignified life. According to experts, what the WTA is proposing is only a step on the road to providing a true living wage. The MIT Living Wage Calculator outlines a living wage based on real-world expense in our community. None of them are extraordinary or unbelievable. If you take that living wage, assume that it's being split with another adult in your household, and adjust it for school-year employment, the amount someone in Middlesex County would need to earn is $56,221 a year. That is more than the WTA is proposing for our highest-earning ESPs three years from now. The WTA proposal for ESP wages may seem like a lot, but it is still well short of what anyone in our community should be earning. Other districts are seeing this, as well as other market forces such as increased minimum wage and the rising cost of living, and are responding. Three years ago, as many districts were agreeing to their largest ESP wage increases ever, Winter Public School raised ESP wages minimally. Now, many comparable districts are in their second round of large wage increases for ESPs, and the reality for Winter's ESPs will further degrade if we do not act. You can see from the numbers on the screen, now is the time for a larger-scale action. Increases of 30, 40, 50% or more are justified and are necessary. The WTA proposal for ESP wages was developed by setting what we felt were attainable benchmarks for the end of our contract, but goals which would make a meaningful impact on the path to a living wage. First, we are proposing the elimination of the first column of the wage scale. It is antiquated and not in use. We are proposing a path to reach a minimum annual wage for ESPs of $35,000 per year by the end of the contract, and a top wage of $50,000 per year in that same contract.
So if you look at the wage proposals for year one, you see in highly qualified associates and bachelors, what do we be looking at?
So we eliminated that first column. There are no ESPs in the district with those qualifications.
So coming in as highly qualified on your first year, you started 25. Then on your first year, you end up on step six, 31, 278, 67, associates and bachelors. Year two, you're highly qualified, would be $30,417, your bachelor's $36,14, your associate's $36,14, your bachelor's $39,267, and so on.
So we started with the ESPs where we wanted to end up, right? We created this third-year wage scale based on the $35,000 and the $50,000, which we thought were appropriate general wages for these employees, and then we worked backwards, right? So we jump from where we are now to year one is the same as we jump from year one to year two and the same as from year two to year three.
And next, we have Kathy D'Amico discussing our secretary unit.
It is not the norm that traditionally hourly employees like ESPs and secretaries that pay annualized wages the way that they are in Winter. One of the effects is masking the true gravity of their low pay. The reality is that most Winter ESPs and secretaries are paid at similar rates. The same moral responsibility, we have to raise the wages of ESPs applied to our union siblings who are, who are school secretaries. We try to compare the rates of pay of school year versus full year or between districts with different lengths of work. Your effective hourly rate allows us to do that. It is determined by taking the total amount of money that your employee earns and dividing it by the number of hours that they actually spend at work. For most of our ESPs and most of our secretaries, that number is very similar. The wage proposal that we're making for the secretary unit is based on the secretary unit keeping pace with the proposal that we made for the ESP unit. And this would be secretary year one, year two, and then that's for the secretary of the year three. It says you want, but that shows it's your fair. As you see here, the proposal that the WTA is making for the secretary unit keeps pace with the wages that we are proposing for the ESP unit.
So we just wanted to, you know, we know that these, you know, we know that this is a big ask. We know that what is going on, but we need to make sure that we have an obligation to our members of this union to ensure that this is a place that they could grow. This is a place that they can stay working. You know, we talked about this in the past. We're fighting for the ability to continue to work here. We love this district. We want to work in this district. We want to make sure, as John said, that we have and are viable to continue to work in this district. The factor of the matter is, Winter is a very expensive place to live. Winter's an expensive place to live beyond it as well. So we're fighting for the ability to continue to be able to work within this district, the district that we love and the district that some of us have been working for for 15, 20, 25 years, others have been working for for one and is a place that they want to continue their career.
So that's our wage proposal that's justification. If you guys need any more walkthrough on the details or the math behind it, I'm happy to help you guys with that either tonight or moving forward. But like Brian said, this is a proposal for all four units, and we hope to see what the school committee thinks that each employee should make, too.
Do any committee members have any questions?
Oh, are you able to provide us this presentation digitally?
The wage proposal is always the same, right? Follow the rule.
May I ask what the rationale is for comparing the teacher's salaries to other districts and not comparing the rest of the unit's salaries to other districts?
I mean, how, I've talked about it in other districts, is...
I want to know for Winter.
Teachers, when they leave being a teacher here in Winter, are very likely going to be a teacher in another district, right? They've invested a lot of time, money, education in becoming a teacher specifically, and they're going to move to be a teacher in another district. The idea that an ESP is going to be being an ESP in Winter to go be an ESP in Salem just doesn't hold true, right? Somebody who leaves a low-paid job here in Winter is not going to go be a low-paid ESP in another district, right? They're more likely to go work in the service industry, in healthcare, in retail, become a teacher themselves, or do any other number of jobs that raise them out of poverty, right? They're not going to swap one low-paid job for another. Sam, thank you, secretary.
I, my career depends on the work of the ESP level staff in my district and the secretarial staff in my district, and I am so grateful for them. I truly value their work. My question still remains, why are we not comparing apples to apples? I understand that a lot of ESPs go on to become licensed teachers, and they work elsewhere for a different salary. Why, why is the proposal not including the same low-paying, I recognize that, low-paying scale in other districts?
Most of the ESPs that leave this district, I think, have 28 years, don't go to another district.
I think that's my point, and I appreciate that. Like, there's so much longevity here, and I wish that weren't the case because I can, I can feel frustration, and I value the decades that you've all put in.
But most ESPs don't leave this district, they go to another district.
That's my point, though, right? Because you don't go to...
They go to another job.
Right, you don't go to, right.
If I can take another whack at explaining. The proposals were designed to try to solve specific problems, right? The problem we're trying to solve for teachers is prevent them from leaving the district to go be a teacher somewhere else. The problem we're trying to solve for the lowest-paid workers in our district is raise them out of poverty. We're not so concerned with them leaving this district. Workers to raise them up to a dignified style of living, right? It's not to solve a problem about where they go next.
So the MTA recognizes that the low rates of pay are across the board in the state. Not, it's not exclusive to Winter.
For ESP?
I don't know.
Yes, ESPs and secretaries.
It's not exclusive to Winter, but it's something that we hope that Winter can be pointed to as paying for ESPs a living wage.
I share that hope. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding that the recognition is that the rate of pay for this work sucks across the state.
Great, let's change it.
Yes.
It sucks, but I will give you the caveat that it's not $21,000 anywhere else, right? So both things can be true, that it is not an effective exercise to compare ourselves to other districts. But if you wanted to, you still need to raise Winter's wages.
Yeah, if you could share those numbers with us, that would be very helpful. Because we're looking at the teacher graphs that you shared. Those are very thorough. I would love to see the comparable graphs in other districts for the other positions. And it's not, I'm not trying to devalue the...
That is why we can...
I'm not. I really am not. I genuinely appreciate the work that you all do. My daughter's in this district. I email you probably more than you care to hear from me. I appreciate it. But I just want to make sure that we're on the same page and that we're looking at things from the lens of equity across the districts and through the lens of what we are representing from our voter base.
And I think that is why we also pointed out, you know, last, last time they got the same 2-2-2 that the teachers have got. A 2-2-2 on $21,000 compared to a 2-2-2 on 50, 60, 70,000 is a massive difference, right? And so that's why you're seeing some of these ESPs in different districts get those 40, 50% raises. And that's what we're looking and hoping to do from here. It was why we did collective bargaining or wanted to or tried to do collective bargaining. Because from the get-go, we said we want to take care of our ESPs and our lowest-paid employees. We wanted to make sure that we had teacher retention, and we wanted paid rental leave.
But you're coming out of Boston, so you already know that your ESPs will make much more than yours.
Not much, but yes.
I would also argue that the chart that we included that showed the wage increases that ESPs are getting in other districts is included in there. And although it doesn't have the exact graph of their exact salaries, it does show that the increases that those other districts have given their ESPs compared to what Winter has historically done for ESPs. I think that's a good, if you needed numbers, just today to look at.
I think that's fair, but the challenge is that it doesn't show where they started out. So if they started out significantly below Winter and are getting a 50% increase, it doesn't, so, to your point. I do have a question about the numbers that we are using for comparison. Do those include, and have you figured out health insurance contributions that these other districts are making versus our district?
No.
And do we, and I guess this is particularly with the ESPs and then, and also, I guess, with the secretaries, does it, have you factored in days worth, hours worked? I'm looking more at the ESPs and the secretaries.
I mean, we only, we only did that comparison, as Brian just said, of Winter employees, other employees for teachers, right? So we didn't compare ourselves to other districts in terms of...
The problem with the secretaries to do it that way is you might be in, to go hourly, you might be in one town, you're only working 10 months. In Winter, you're working 12 months.
Right, right.
The hours, so that's...
Yeah, I 100% agree, and that's why I think that that's important. Because you were saying, you know, when you compare the secretaries to ESPs, the secretaries are making more out, more days. And so effectively, that ends up in being a lower wage. So that's why those numbers are, to me, important to understand. I think teachers typically work about the same.
183 to 185 is placed in hours, but yeah.
So that's less of an issue across the districts. Other questions from the committee? Okay. Thank you very much for this proposal. I really appreciate that you all are here and supporting your proposal. I appreciate the shows of solidarity across the unions, and it is helpful for us to have here specifically what you're looking for for each unit. As you are looking for... As you are looking for different things for each unit, we are going to be taking that into consideration. That's why we feel it's easier for us to respond to each unit independently, but understanding the whole is, is hugely helpful. And clearly, this town has voted to make an investment in our education. We have the override, we know that, we know that we did that, so that we would have more budget, so that we could address these concerns. We still have a budget, and we still have constraints, and I, I think that our job is going to be to sift through what we can do, what we feel is a fair, moving toward what you want. We clearly value our teachers, we clearly want to keep you, we clearly want to make you, be able to provide an environment and a situation that is conducive to you being able to do your best work for our children. That is something that this town clearly values. And yet, we have budget, so we need to consider that, and we need to consider both the impact of these proposals as well as all of the other proposals, because some of the other proposals that you have requested would also have a budget impact. So our, our job now and our, is going to be to consider all of those together to see where we could land and what we might be able to suggest as our counterproposal.
Do you guys have a counterproposal prepared today, or can we expect that at the next meetings, we'll have a counterproposal for each unit?
We do not have anything tonight, in part because we know we needed to be able to address each unit, and we, without understanding what you wanted to do, it was hard for us to be able to say, this is where we would start out, this is where we would want to go. Our expectation is that, that will be, that will happen at each of the individual subcommittee meetings that are coming, and our hope tonight is to get those on, on the books tonight, if possible, but if not, very, in the next few days, so that we can continue this process. We've been at this for four months. I think that we've made some progress. I think that we would like to see things move more expeditiously. I think everybody would appreciate that, and so we will be working as quickly and expeditiously as we can, but we need to be able to really dig into and analyze these numbers to be able to give you a fair proposal.
Just out of curiosity, has the school committee given thought already of what you think that school employees should be making?
This is a constant topic of discussion.
I also think that phrasing is a little strange.
I was just going to say, should be versus kind of towards.
Yeah, I mean, I think those are different conversations.
You know, as school committee members, one of our primary responsibilities is management of the budget. So what I think a teacher should be paid, or an ESP should be paid, actually has very little to do with the work that we have to do.
So should, should be, I mean, you guys are making a proposal, right? So your proposal is what I think teachers should be making.
No, no, that's what I'm arguing with you. It's not about what I think teachers should be making.
Are you semantics-wise?
No, I'm not, because I do think...
Well, it's what you think based on the budget. That's what you mean.
No, but it's not what we think. It's this town, as we've articulated, voted on an override, which is, you know, as all of, all of us who reside in Winthrop know, this is increasing our taxes by about $1,000 a year for the average family, right? So in going to the town and asking for this extra money, which, you know, was one of my most proud moments of being a Winthrop president, actually, was that override. But with that override, the town basically reaffirmed that we need to spend their money carefully, and there's a very limited amount of it. So what I think a teacher should be paid, I think a teacher should be paid $100,000. I think an ESP should be paid $70,000. What I think has no relationship to the money and the budget and what the taxpayers of Winthrop have pledged to the school. So I want to be really clear, when we come back with counterproposal, it is not what we think teachers or anybody that works at my daughter's school, I mean, sitting across the table from a person who taught my daughter, who taught her to read, for goodness sake. I mean, I, I, you know, the snappy boy knows this. So what I think she is worth is so much more than I could ever express in numbers, but please don't be mistaken, this is not about what we think anyone is worth. It is what the town, the town can pay, when we've asked every homeowner or someone who can text us to head there. And I take that responsibility seriously.
I appreciate that, Suzanne. I was trying to say, that's the Ms. Powell's point, like, we've been at this for a while. And so my question is, do you have a wage proposal that you guys have already worked on and is more or less ready, or are you now starting from scratch based on what we have provided you, and I'm going to respond to that?
We have been working on wage proposals in various forms and, and very, we are not starting from scratch, but we also need to be able to respond to this, and without this, we had, we didn't have a sense of where our budget could go. And so when we look at this contract, we take into consideration everything, all of the extra things that you've added for, the family needs, all of the proposals that you have, some of them have a monetary component. So when I'm looking at the monetary component, and now I'm looking at my wage component, that is going to help me to make decisions about how I'm going to craft, how we are going to craft our response.
We began negotiations the first week of May at almost every session, and we've had about 10, if you add up all the sessions with all of the units. The committee, or the subcommittees made a request for your wage proposal, that the subcommittees were handicapped in making any wage proposal without knowing what type of wage proposal you were looking at. So while we began in May, we're now getting for the first time in Sept-, at the end of September, your first wage proposal.
We really only had three meetings, though, because, per unit, right? Because a lot of this, we had to introduce each other each at every time. We did ask for collective bargaining, so we could have moved a little bit quicker on each and every single one of those issues. Half of those meetings were spent trying to get tentative agreements that we had already talked about for other units. So I understand we've been working on this since May. I do appreciate that. I've been in every single one, just like some of the people here at this table, right? But I don't want it to be wrong and said, we've had 10 of these. We really had three per unit max.
Per unit. With four units, that's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work. I got it figured. It's a lot of work, but I just don't want it to be like, I just don't want it to be, you know, I just understand that, oh, we've been at this for 10 times? We have, we've been at it for three times.
We're not. I think the point, like, we've said it a number of times, our goal is to pay you all as fairly as we possibly can afford to do. The first proposals that were put across the table to us in a bound notebook were several things that we knew would cost money. We've had, it was on the ballot twice to increase the budget and to do a wage, I mean, a tax override. The first time it failed, the second time it passed. We have to be very careful with what we're doing. We want nothing more than to put money into your pockets and to respect you through your wages as we can. We're also bound to the budget that is in the town, or elected officials, that is our responsibility. It's hard, it's challenging. I, I respect every single one of you here, and I thank you all for coming, and I hope that you understand the position that we're in. It has nothing to do with our respect for you or your value, it just has to do with numbers, unfortunately.
Can we talk to us one another bit? Can we just...
We also, yeah, we, we, now we have your priorities, and we felt that that was the necessary piece for us to be able to make our final proposals on all of this.
You've had discussions in sessions with Brian, and that makes sense to do that moving forward rather than trying to...
Would you allow me to...
I mean, you guys have everybody here, so I don't know what to do here.
So typically, what we've done is, I've gone back the next day and put a bunch of dates out in a Google Doc, make sure I can get the appropriate people at the table, so we have a forum, so we don't have to reschedule anything, and do it as, as fast as possible. As you guys know, over the summer, we had a lot of conflicts in scheduling, not just on our side, but on the side of the WTA as well, to get meetings in over the summer. Totally get it, people go on vacation, people have planned things, nobody really wants to sit in this room and go and see if the students are working over the summer. So typically, I would put out a Google Doc and say, here are seven dates, and can you come at, can the ESP subgroup come at this time? And then I immediately give it to Brian, and Brian checks it, and now we can do a bunch in a row versus, and, and we were bound to get everybody, if you remember.
Yeah, I think we were also constrained, as both of us started spring. So that also helps.
Yeah, yeah, so that kind of thing.
And also, neither of us are fall coaches.
But I think this time around, if we can, now that we're not bound to making sure each group had X amount of meetings, which we were bound to before, which kind of messed a little bit with the schedule, now if we can set up, you know, and if we don't lose all three, we don't lose all three, but two to three per group, and do it that way, we could, yeah, so we could get, we could get quite a few on the books, and that would ensure that everybody would be there.
Whatever you guys got to do to schedule, do it. And we're, we're ready to go a bit quicker about this fall, so it's...
I can get that, I can get, I can get it pulled together tomorrow, it's not getting the details from Brian.
We do have, I think, according to the ground rules that we signed at the beginning, we still have one more session to present new proposals for each unit, and I think the WTA is done, with the exception of having to, like, flesh out some of those conceptual proposals that we made in the first session, so those will be fleshed out at the next session, but I think we're excited, hopeful to hear any proposals the school committee has, and again, start to check things off.
So that sort of lifts the bound of the extra, making sure that everybody got another bite to the apple first, right? In that plan, that you guys wanted us to go with a plan that every group met once, and then every group got wise, and then it became a coalition bargaining.
I mean, we're still, we're still not going to be interested in having one of the units dramatically outpace the other.
Yeah, neither are we, but if it came to...
We also made the commitment, we're not going to sign any of the contracts until we have all our contracts ready.
Yep, we understand that. So I will get that out to the school committee, get some dates, get it to Brian, and then Brian and Natalie should text each other, talk to each other, we can do sex talks to some of them.
Just to confirm on the record, we will have school committee proposals at the next session for each of the individual units.
Yeah.
Any further questions? If done, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any extensions for a pause? Meaning is adjourned.
Thank you all.